...those folks who have left an indelible mark on our community, on our school, and on our kids and continue to change the culture of the place that we call upon. As this program began, we had a board member named Clyde Smith who worked here and served here for more than 20 years as a member of this Board of Educators. He served here and he served at the state level as President of TSB. Truly was a remarkable leader and was remarkable in the fact that he was quick to credit everyone else for the great things that happened here when those of us who best knew Clyde knew that he orchestrated most of those things. So Clyde was a, truly a leader that modeled leadership in a manner that every board member, every teacher, every employee who interfaced with Clyde trusted, relied upon, and believed without a doubt that he was a positive impactor on our future. Clyde passed way too early and much too soon and left a tremendous void, but he also left a legacy that said leadership matters, leadership is important, and we want honor that we deserve. So I had an assistant superintendent and a board member. And they got together, and a lot of times they got together and did bad things, but they got to do real good things, didn't they? And the real good thing that they did was they said, "Let's honor some great people in the history of Oklahoma City schools, and let's honor them in memory of Clyde Smith." Vicki Sheldon, you did a remarkable thing as you implemented this program, as you developed this idea, and gave us an opportunity to celebrate some wonderful people. Appreciate your work, and I appreciate your respect and that of Clyde Smith. Thank you very much. We enjoy, as much as anything, I enjoy the cookies, but as much as anything, we enjoy the fact that folks have opportunity to celebrate those memories, those ideas, and those things that they hold very dear. And so we always want to leave some time for you to share with the rest of our group. Lori Smith, I just talked about your husband, whom I love deeply.
I'm sorry I missed that.
No, please be sorry at all, and I don't want to miss my opportunity to thank you for sharing Clyde's work. We greatly appreciate it.
It was honestly more important to him than his job. His job, job.
Now, I can tell you one thing that I know about Clyde. This would have been one night where he would have hurried us out of the board meeting, out of the board meeting, because he would have said, "We've got a Oklahoma kid with a Yankees cap on." And he would not have missed an opportunity to see a Oklahoma kid with a Yankees cap on TV. We may have had to move the board meeting to that. We want you to have an opportunity to share your thoughts, to share your memories, to reflect on truly an amazing lady who served this district remarkably. And I say that not from a script, I say that from the perspective of a parent who had two children in her class, and they became more skilled instructors as a result of her intervention. But more importantly, they became better people as a result of their interaction with Dr. Diane Sawyer. Sawyer family, I want you to know that we appreciate greatly your sharing your mother with us. She has changed our educational community every bit as much as she has modeled and changed the three of you. Thank you very much for your sharing. Mr. Welsh, where are you?
There you are.
You're right, I'm hoping to be brief, but let's make sure we introduce everything. Absolutely, Sam Sawyer, her son.
And Chris, our daughter's Christie, Stephanie. And assistant law, is that right, Delwan? Delwan Live. I can't one of Dr. Lawson many times, but I can on this one because I had three children that she had. And before I turn back to them and Dr. Sawyer, I told Dr. Lawson earlier today that Mr. McClure, I think most people know what Craig McClure, know who he was if they didn't know him directly. But he was coached here at football, I guess, in the 50s, and then he was principal at West and then to high school for a good period, almost, I guess, in the mid-70s. But anyway, when I was really young, I had counseling session with him, and he was talking about his coaching days. He coached for 18 years, Rockwood, McMenmore, and Tallahassee, and he did a really good job. But he said that he really felt like that every player he had, he never had a player on Friday night during a game, ended the game, didn't think that he had given his best effort. And he said, "But my job was on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday, showing and forcing and more out." And that really made a dent on me. And I had, but my three children were more gifted in math and science probably, and two of them especially probably didn't feel like they could do a whole lot in her class. And I told Dr. Lawson, I think it was the first day that they had, two of them would, she said, "Give me an essay on how you feel today. I think they probably put down good and probably spell it correctly and handed that in." She, she in a completely different way, not near as rough, firm, and tough as Mr. McClure, but in a way, she did the same thing. She made them come better and get more effort than they thought they could. And I have no way that you can pay more tribute to the teachers than that. And with that, I'm open for anybody, I don't care how long it takes, we'll stay a few minutes. Anybody.
I'm gonna start.
Please.
I'm Diddy Eads, I have two daughters, Jekka, Diane, and one's 33 now, one's 27. And as it goes, sometimes my youngest daughter just never found as smart as my first, that verbal thing. And she, she's just bright. But a story that I'll always remember is their goal was to get in Diane Sawyer and try things in this class. That was both their goals at high school, and that was their ultimate goal was to get in classes. And Amanda did well, and my oldest, she's one of these, she didn't have to study, she did well, like great grades, no problem. When Chrissy was in there, she accepted, and I'm here for the gift of data, she decided she was supposed to go to college, and she applied to be in the honors program at U C. And I went into a conference, and it was right in that process time, and Diane said, "Diddy, Chrissy's biggest problem is that she just doesn't have the confidence. She can write, she just doesn't have the confidence." And I said, "I know, and we just keep telling her that she's just as smart as her sister at Shenanigans." So the day Chrissy got her acceptance letter to the honors program at U C, she came running in and she said, "I beat Chrissy, I did better than my sister, and this Sawyer knows it." I thought that was the coolest thing. Thank you, your mother was amazing. She absolutely inspired children beyond belief. So thank you so much for sharing with us.
I taught next door Diane Sawyer for sixteen, seven, thirteen, twelve years. A lot of years. I feel like I, y'all were in college, but I heard stories, I kind of feel like I watched you grow up in a way. Just a couple of things about Diane. When I got hired, and I got hired really close to the beginning of the start of school, as a matter of fact, I think everybody else was already there, and I was the last one through the door. But when Dr. Peddington called me, he said, "You just see Diane Sawyer, she's got everything, she knows what you're supposed to be doing." And I walked in and I sat down next to her, every day's middle school, she said, "Here's the syllabus, here's what you're gonna be doing every day." And I looked at it, and every day was planned out for the first six weeks, and held syllabus for the first semester. And I started out at a dead run to try to keep up with her, and I ran as hard and fast as I could for that first year, trying to keep pace with her. And it was, it was a great experience. It made me a better teacher. I learned the importance of collaborating, some of the best professional development I could have had. Because in between those bells, when we'd stand out in the hallway, and Markeith Masuda ended up across the hall from us, and she was seen as just down the way, and when we'd stand up there, we'd talk about what we did, and how we're gonna do it differently next time, and share our successes and our failures. And Diane always had brought you. She always, she just loved getting dressed up, coming to work every day. She loved getting dressed up, coming to work. Put, put, give them a little, put a heel, go, go. And she came in one morning, she says, "Okay, girls, I've been doing spring, and I found out people who keep their minds active don't get Alzheimer's. So here's what we're gonna do. We're gonna learn to play bridge, and we're gonna learn to play golf. Who's winner? We know how to play bridge, so we did what geeks would do, we got a book. We got a book. And the truth being that we probably spent a lot more time eating desserts and sipping wine than we did really doing any serious card playing. And then spring came, and we went out for the first time to the golf clubs, and we never picked the cards back up again. And one day we were out on golf course, and my husband Mark happened to be with us, and Diane was out there, and she was getting all sweaty. She goes back, and Mark said, "Diane, you're hitting like a lady. You gotta draw back and hit it like a broad, just hit it like a broad." And she did. And at that point, we became the golf broads. So we were on golf course every time we got a chance. And, you know, I miss her to this day. Thank you for letting us be a part of her lives. And I remember the night we went out when she was nominated for Teacher of the Year for the state. Again, love your work, love your work. I was sitting next to her, and as that woman, the previous Teacher of the Year was standing up there talking, she was talking about, you know, the downside of this was the time that she had to be away from her students, and she talked about all the traveling, and you know, being away for weeks at a time. And I could see Diane's eyes getting bigger and bigger and bigger, and she was drawing up more and more and more. And when they announced the name and somebody else was, like she went... Or I said, "You know, maybe out of classroom, I don't want to be out of classroom, I don't want to be away from my kids." And she did it. But she was, she was a dear friend to us, and a fabulous teacher for my child, and she was Auntie Diane to my kids. And thank y'all, thank you for sharing with us.
It was my pleasure to recommend Diane for employment. And she had, she had been the editor of a newspaper, and at the time, I spoke with her about teaching, she wasn't sure that what she wanted to do. And so I had to be a salesman. It really wasn't an interview, it was more like I was trying to convince her that it would be good for her, and would be really good for us, if she would come and teach for us. And some of you might remember Janil Wood, who was librarian. Janil came to me and said, she had worked with Diane at West Junior High School years earlier, and she said, "I don't know whether you can convince her to teach again or not, but she said, if you could get her just for two or three years, it would be wonderful." And Diane agreed to come forward, and she exceeded all of our expectations. I mean, she was, she was an excellent teacher, she was a role model, she was professional in everything that she did, and such a good person. And we all love her so much.
When my son Scott, went next door to Sawyer's, Christie's side, Scott's side, and we were there with Sammy's boardroom. And then the gorgeous little Stephanie was right there in the middle of the hall. And it changed my life because I gained a truly good friend. We stayed friends, and then ended up at Tallahassee School working together. We made nine trips to Europe with students, and those are some of the most exciting and wonderful memories that I will ever have, rooming with Diane Sawyer in Europe, and seeing her manage everybody, the ACIS people, the students, and I sometimes stood around, but she was absolutely incredible in guiding those students, and I was very fortunate to be a part of that. Then she walked in my office one day, and she said, "Let's get our progress." And I said, "Okay." And we did. And then, one day, we were at Celtic Cup, and she said, "I'm just not ready..." We were bapping in our business. And she said, "Let's stay on until we are 69." Oh, no, until we are 70, until we're 70. We were gonna work till we were 70, and we were gonna quit the same year. And Diane didn't make it. So, right before I turned 70, in that fall, right, I handed in my resignation until Dr. Lawson, I had been there long enough. She didn't work till she was 70, and I wasn't gonna work with my students.
Thank you.
Well, I wanna say just a couple of things. I knew Diane best as a friend only because of her children, and my children. I met her the first time was at West Middle School. She was teaching, and I was, God love me, substituting, and... And, you know, my child, my oldest child was 18 months old, so was Stephanie, and so Diane and I, I got to know, she said, "Who?" I said, "18 months old, who do you give it to?" And we substituted. But I guess what I'd like to say most of it is, not only was she a wonderful teacher because I didn't know her at the high school and on the schoolwork, but as a parent, and as a second mother to my children, because my youngest daughter's Sam's age. So I had children in Stephanie's and Sam's age, and then Christie was right there with them, children, and then all that. So I knew her best as a mother of my children, and a mother of my children, and that, in that perspective, I think she was just as tops there too. That, you know, driving her to teaching, so thank you so much. I'm one of my business, but...
I knew Diane mostly as a parent, and she, both of our daughters, Katie and Bonnie, were in her class. And I remember thinking, we kept hearing these rumors, "Oh, she's going to retire," you know, "before we could get there too." And we're like, "No, don't let her leave until our girls can get through there." But she was wonderful. A couple of things come to mind about her. One, she always looked perfect, you know, just perfect. Yet, she wasn't, she didn't put you off with that. Like, students felt they had come to her with their imperfections. And I always admired that because the students in her room wanted to go to her, and they knew that she was gonna help them. And if they had it wrong, she was gonna help them fix it. We, I don't think we could have gotten our essays written for our college applications without her, that she would read over the summer and get back with you on those. The other thing that comes to my mind is, it's a good read. And she and my daughter Katie really clicked because Katie loves to read. And so for years, even after Katie graduated, she would see Diane somewhere, and she would say, "Okay, you've got, you've got to read this one, it's a good read." I had never heard those words before, and so she and Katie always said that back and forth, and I think about that. And the other memory I have of her, you may not be aware of, but when she moved to Nashville to live there at the Assistant Living, I went to visit her one time. And she was actually sitting at the table, eating lunch, with a really close friend of my dad's that was living there. And they had developed this wonderful friendship, and that was the last time that I got to see her and talk with her. And so I guess that sticks with me, that she just kept that, classing Diane Sawyer to the very end. And in establishing those friendships there, those friends of my dad's said, you know, "We just love her, we are so glad she's here," and had the friendships with them. So I'm just thankful that our lives intercepted, and that I was blessed by her, and thank y'all so much for sharing with us.
My interaction with Dr. Sawyer was as a parent, and also a father too, a colleague. And so I had three kids in the business system, two of which had Dr. Sawyer, and unfortunately, my younger daughter didn't have the opportunity. About four years ago, I was invited to an ATO father-son dinner, and my younger son, my middle child, was there, and there was six fraternity brothers that all went to the same prep school on Long Island, and the father worked at New York Stock Exchange. We were having dinner, and there was a conversation that went on about school things, and one boy was finally pointed out, and then table was set, about how everyone was doing in this school, and then pointed at Brandon and said, "He's the one, he's the smartest one, he does the best in school." And then there was this pregnant pause, and even of the schools. And...
I hate to make...
They picked up the funnies. And, but they started talking to Brandon about reading in school and things, and he credited his success to three teachers, one of which was Dr. Sawyer. Her name is mentioned in that conversation, and he gave her that credit. He was successful in liberal arts education, so on, and all her clients.
This is, sorry, Clyde. This slide we have, we're in here in conference, not due actually, we're just, we're there with all the views. And I credit that dog. She's a really good English acerbist, so we had that comment. But I just knew, you know, living here, a lot of people was writing crap from the books and stuff, and I found the file folder that she made everybody have of essays that we should go to write for your college, personal statements, why I didn't go to college, resume, that kind of thing. And I got looking at all of the essays that were written that she was looking up on, and Dr. Sawyer was a teacher, she was a mentor, correct? Which she would bring to paper, she would point out, "What are you doing wrong?", but also she would have, "Get ready to go." And so the nicest feedback I've ever seen on a paper was from another student. It's worse. It's tough. As a new teacher, Mr. Ryan has always had a sort of other teachers, one person in the school, and someone else in the, in some of the other schools. So I, of course, I'm still Dr. Sawyer. I'll walk in, and her first day of her 18th grade class, number one, thirty-five kids, but our kids keep having one, this is, like, we've got thirty-five kids. She knew my mind, but she said, to the school, vocabulary. The first thing I realized as I walked out of there, first of all, I'm a small kid teaching She also had my son. And as we know, she always looked perfect. When they knew attire, dress code, and cap sleeves, dress it down to her knees, she told her class, "I don't have anything to wear." And then back in those days, when we got our AP scores, it had everybody's name and all their grades, so I'm looking for my AP or AP Street Kids scores, and you know, it's my son's in a class, so I'm gonna dip over there and see what he made. He made a one, everybody else made a five. So of course I felt a lot of joy when she said, "My son, Rob has a gift, he just has to find his gift, it's just not anymore." But that was, that was her, you know, telling me, she had, he had a gift, and he does have that gift. I just so appreciate her, and I want to thank her, I'm actually, appreciate her presence
Well, I don't know what I wanna say, but I do wanna say this. I have two daughters, I have her also, one of them has a primary, which is pretty amazing. I thought that Van had the corner market on taking so many classes and credits at the school, but Diane did newspaper work. As a sophomore, she always went, used sophomores on the newspaper stuff. And I remember my daughter really wanted to take the journalism class, and so she said, "I think signature, this song, Dr. Sawyer, he sung it." And Dr. Sawyer said, "I don't know about all this." And she said, "My mom's gift is there." And she goes, "Okay." So she enjoyed her, and she was with her for, you know, six semesters on that, just loving, loving journalism, and real exposure to her. Diane just continued this relationship to these kids. She came all the way to Suwannee, visited her at school with Kathy, and just always met up with kids, and just such a great little mentor to so many people. And I just can't tell you, when I think about walking around the halls, I always think about, "There's Diane, and then there's her little flock of chickeneats walking around," like, all hovering around her, because they just wanted to be near her, because she was so wonderful and so lovely and eager. Then one other thing I remember about Diane, she did dress just perfect, all the time. Never dressed down, yeah. So we had spirit day one day, and she came with her bootings and, oh, Tallahassee shirt, and she said, "Well, Sam's hometown." But I meant that were crisp.
Oh, yeah. I tried to take pictures.
We've got a formal recognition as a part of the agenda, and more important, we have wonderful memories of the likes of Diane. Thank you for joining us here, we appreciate it.
Can I say something just?
Please do.
Just about my brother's, so thank you all so much. You know, we knew our mother as mom, and we didn't really know her as a teacher, but we did see the lines of students that would come to the house on Thanksgiving Day or Christmas Day. And we knew that she was passionate of what she did, she was passionate about her girlfriends. And I don't think I've ever met anybody that truly loved what she did, or just doesn't appreciate what she does. And the last few years of her life were very sad, and this is all so, it's just so joyful to be in this room and to hear all of this, you know, wonderful stories that, you know, we're all very grateful that she reminded us today. So thank you so much for all of this, and we really appreciate it.
All right, the first thing we do, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. And if you'll indulge me just a minute, I wanna have a period of brief silence in Thanksgiving and appreciation for the many years of service and influence of two people, to the students... to the students of our school system, Dr. Diane Sawyer and Dr. Dan Lawson. Join with me, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Y'all, you're welcome to stay or leave. I'm going to give you time. There's going to be a, in a short time, we'll have a little bit to finish this up for her, and then you can stay again, or you're free to leave in also. All right, first thing, Ms. Vaughn, we've got a roll call. Everyone is present except Dr. Lynn, who's been out of town. First, we need to have approval of the agenda as presented. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as we had?
Summit.
A motion from Ms. Usman, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Robinson. Any discussion? If not, if you're for the motion, please respond by saying aye. Raise your hand, please. Any opposed? Special items? Is there any individual that would like to address the board on any agenda item or a non-agenda item? Thank you. And now, Dr. Lawson, special recognition for Clyde Smith Jr., leadership award.
In the last decade, one of the things that our Board of Education has done to recognize the memory of Clyde W. Smith is to truly identify those folks in our community who have left a remarkable mark on leadership associated with education. Clyde Smith was a long-serving board member who also served as president of TSBA. He was a local businessman. And to generations, he was coach. He was a baseball coach who loved baseball and loved the kids that he worked with. Clyde was taken from us much too early, but we had a, one of our board members, Ms. Vicky Shelton, and an assistant superintendent, Mr. Waylon Long, got together and decided that it would be really important to name recipients who have changed education for the better in our community in honor of Clyde Smith. Our board embraced that idea and quickly learned that we had a slate of candidates that were absolutely remarkable. In fact, I've been in dialogues with this board where the discussion came to the point of, we're going to fill up this board quickly, and we better think about pacing ourselves a bit, which is a real testament to the quality of folks that we have impacting on the lives of our children every day. We have a long list of potential nominees and candidates, but jumping to the top of that list was Dr. Diane Sawyer, who served here at West Middle School as well as Tullahoma High School. Her responsibility was to teach English, but much more than that responsibility, she embraced the prospect of changing lives for the better. And truly, I'm only sorry that those of you who are watching on TV don't have the opportunity to embrace the conversations that took place in the open reception, where we had testimony after testimony of folks who were quick to speak to the fact that Diane changed their lives, the lives of their children, and truly the nature of this community for the better. So the Board of Education here voted quickly and unanimously to recognize Dr. Diane Sawyer as the 2018 recipient of the Clyde Smith Jr. Leadership Award. Ms. Vaughn has graciously put together a reception this evening, and we're delighted to have company tonight to celebrate the memory of Dr. Sawyer. And Ms. Vaughn also took care of a plaque that will hang in perpetuity outside in the lobby that will truly signify the memory, just a token of the memory of the lives that she changed. Ladies and gentlemen, I would welcome your applause in memory of Dr. Diane Sawyer and what she has done for our community. Thank you.
Now, if you don't want to listen to the maintenance committee report, who's going to be a delegate to TSBA convention, you're free to move. I'll give you a little bit of time. If you want to stay, you can stay all you want. All right, let's go to the maintenance committee report. We met the first of October, and the bulk of the conversation and discussion was about Bel Air School and replacement of water drains, and also the water lines coming into the building. We then went, made our report to the full board at the study session a week later. And there is a motion, a suggestive motion that we recommend is on your agenda, and I'll ask for that motion in just a second, because we go through some other items. Since the last time we met, the Tim Jensen reports that we are now officially off the board of THS, which has been a long time coming. It's been several years that we've been trying to make an effort to get off of that. The alternative school is really doing well. Been a tremendous amount of credits already made up, just nine weeks into the school year. And Ms. Branding, who runs it, got two classrooms, and there's a dividing wall between the two, and so it's going to be easier for her and her aide to watch and to lead. Tim's going to go in there and take all that wall out, so won't mind a little bearing on, it'll take a whole lot of time and money to do that. Again, I would encourage y'all, to the other board members, to go over to Old West to see pre-k room that they did during the summer, too, that's across the hall from Ms. Dotson's original room. And when this first came up to the maintenance committee, I thought that they were trying to enlarge Ms. Dotson's room. But state law will not allow you, doesn't matter how big the room is, you can only have so many kids in there. We could have taken, put the other children in there, we could have gone all the way to the street, but if it's the same room, you can't do it. So we had to go on the other side, across the hallway and remodel the area. And Mr. Jensen did a great job with that, and it's well worth your time to go over there and look at Ms. Dotson's and across the hall, and also make a triple alternative school area, all in the same building. And those programs really look good right now. And we spent quite a bit of time also looking at some, a little bit of architectural renderings and some possibilities of what we may be able to do at Fair. That's for a later time and for another director of schools at some point to figure out what world we're going to do. But I would go back and tell you that our recommended motion on Bel Air is to authorize Mr. Carver to enter into a contract with OLG, that's the engineering company, for the purpose of correcting drainage and plumbing issues at Bel Air Elementary. Got a motion by Ms. Fogarty?
I just have a question, but I can't get where. I have to insert the question.
Okay, let's get a second, and then we'll get the question. Got a second from Ms. Lawson. Now, Amy, this way.
Have we had three bids?
We have not. Part of this, he will get the bids. That's part of the job.
Let me offer a clarification as to what OLG will do. They're looking at design work, not the actual work itself.
Oh, okay, all right.
So you're looking at employment of an engineering firm, and you're not compelled to seek bids in that regard.
All right.
But at some point, they would be the ones to draw the specs.
Okay.
The other thing that, and this is probably a good time to dialogue about this, just as a quick reminder, because Mr. Carver won't know this. The last time we did a building project, we included in the bid package the contract to be used. Now, the reason we did that, Mr. Miller put together that contract to be used, so there would be no questions as to negotiating venues, negotiating agreements, negotiating values. Here is what we are using, and if you want to bid this project, you're going to bid it per our specs. And we found that as we did that project, we had no contested issues, no challenges. And folks, I would strongly recommend do exactly the same thing in all future projects.
Good recommendation.
Mr. Miller, what did I leave out in that regard? I just think that's a real important process.
Yeah, generally, what we do is we, the Arctic OLG will draw the specs from the building, and we'll draw the contract, and then all of them as part of the bid package. The bid on that package is all, and it takes a lot of negotiation on that.
Any other discussion or questions? If not, if you're for the motion, please respond by, not by saying aye, but by raising your hand. Any opposed? Thank you. All right, Dr. Lawson, board policy, section three, support services.
If I'm not mistaken, Dr. Carter, this is our annual update on support services, section three. Has TSBA sent anything that needs to be changed?
No. So that's information only, then?
That's great.
Policy updates.
Dr. Carter, please, sir.
Sure. Policy updates. We have two that we're recommending tonight. Policy 1.701, school district planning, and policy 4.206, homebound destruction. We've reviewed these in the session, and these are the very simple properties that we'll, we have others, but we're getting back later. Problem.
And again, those were all okay by Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Any further questions? I'll entertain a motion then to accept those changes.
This is the first. And this is where we do two readings?
Just one or two. Just this one, yes.
Okay. Summit.
Motion. Ms. Robinson, you've got a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Usman. Any further discussion? If not, for the motion, please raise your hand. Any opposed? I'm getting the hang of that hand now. Delegates to the TSBA convention, I think we settled on Amy, Gigi, Dr. Lynn, and I'll be the alternate.
More than I can.
Health insurance premium. Wish to make some comments first?
I certainly can. We had a two and a half percent increase in our health insurance premium. And as you may recall, five, five years ago, we implemented, four years ago, I guess, we implemented a cap that basically said the district contribution on health insurance won't increase unless our board makes a specific recommendation. So prior to, four years ago, if insurance went up by seven percent or eight percent, then we typically just increased that amount. So we have put some cost containment measures in. And those cost containment measures will provide for the lower two tiers of single insurance coverage at a hundred percent for the employee. So the CDHP as well as the limited PPOs are paid for at a hundred percent, but both the standard and the premium coverages require an employee contribution. Likewise, there is a value that the board has authorized for employee and child, employee and spouse, and family coverage. Just to give you an idea of what the district contribution is today, our employee-only coverage has a cap of $524 a month. Our employee-child has a cap of $691 per month. Our employee-spouse is $816 per month, and the district pays $1,089 per month on our family coverage. We had an extensive dialogue in the board study session. We had, we looked at a lot of values. We surveyed all the districts contiguous to us. And candidly, to my surprise, we found our employee-only coverage was tied with the lowest in our contiguous area. Likewise, our employee-child or children was one of the lower two coverages. But the employee-and-spouse coverage, as well as the family coverage, was among the best of those contiguous to us. So as we had a dialogue at our study session, I left with the belief that I was going to propose an increase of about that two and a half percent to the two lowest levels, to our employee-only coverage moving from 524 to 537, and our employee-and-child or children moving from 691 to 711, with both the employee-spouse and the family coverage remaining stacked. I'd be happy to answer any questions in that regard.
Before we do that, let's get a motion, because we went, we did a lot of hand wrangling and discussion during the study session. Now I've really got a real good feel for what, where we were headed. I would like to get a motion that matches up with administration's suggestions or any other, just so we have something on the floor where we can have a point to discuss without going a whole bunch of different directions.
Okay, I'll make the motion as recommended.
All right. Ms. Fogarty, make the motion to support the increase of employees' health to 537 monthly, and the employee with children to 711. Is there a second? Is there a second? If there is a second, I'll ask, is there a other motion? If you don't get a motion, that will just stay as it is, which is also an option, and it's fine with me.
The cap would remain, is what you mean?
Correct.
Okay. Then I'd like to make a motion that we increase the employee-only from 524 to 537, and that we leave employee and child at 691, employee and spouse at 861, and employee and family at 1,089.
To condense it, let's just do one, because...
Okay.
Not do anything else, we'll get the rest of the motion.
Okay.
The motion then will be to raise the employee cap to 537. Is there a second to that motion? Any second to 537?
I have a second there.
Okay, get a motion and a second now. Ms. Johnson, Ms. Robinson. Now, discussion.
How much will that raise the overall value? Because I can't remember the numbers. Does anyone have that about?
No, I don't know. Ms. Vaughn has her spreadsheet as readily available as she had it last meeting or not.
Was it about, was it about...
I know the last value was 24,000 for, it was 48,000 as a total, and 24,000 during this budget year, as I recall.
If we didn't...
27,000.
Yeah, I can't tell you.
That's going to be significant, I would say.
Do you have the...
I remember that group was smaller.
Does anybody have... Sandy, do you have the numbers that we had on each before?
I do not.
How long would it take to get them?
I'm working on it.
Keep quiet then.
So Dan, to do the 13 and 20, was going to have us at 24,000 for this budget year, and then the additional, I mean, to get a total calendar year, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and you were looking at changing the employee-only to?
$537.
Okay, and leaving all the others alone?
Yes, ma'am.
Just need the number of, that were enrolled in employee-only. The amount for employee for the year.
She's got her spreadsheet, so what's that?
You want the number of employees that will affect?
No, don't confuse it, just let her plug that in one number in her spreadsheet, and it'll work, it'll get you the answer.
You want the 122973, is that?
No, we want the number of employees that are in that bracket, of the four possibilities. Do you remember off the top?
Changing that number makes, looks like it makes the impact 17862.
Then multiply that by 12, and it's had for six months. I'm not sure. $1700, so.
If you change employee only to the $537, it makes a net increase for the month, this was done by the month, to $2977.
$2977 by the month.
And for the year.
So it's gonna be a little less than $36,000 for the 12 months.
Compared to $48,000.
True.
$35, $35724.
Thank you. What'd the calculator say, $35?
$35724 is what it said, if I put the number.
Yeah, now that's gotta be correct. Alright, any other discussion? Then I'll call for the vote, for those favor of the motion to extend the cap only for the employees only to $537 a month. All who's in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Thank you all. It was a little quicker than I expected. New business.
Why did you look left when you said that? Didn't even look right.
Let's see, Dr. Lawson, approval, now where are we, new policies?
Yes, sir. Dr. Carter, let's talk about water testing, please, sir.
Water testing, our board has a policy, the state, you know, the law, that's why we don't have to do water testing, we recommend that we do that.
Sounds good, all of them make a motion.
Again, this one came from Dr. Lawson, and I, on the day of the Hill, at a committee meeting, and letting school water was an issue.
And this was talked about in the last state session, but it will have to go twice.
And I understand we've been doing this?
We began after we came back from Day on the Hill. So we have accomplished.
We had tested, and it was free, but we sent the policy to continue to test.
Now, as a quick reminder, don't believe that you will test once and be finished. This policy prescribes a mechanism to test, a procedure to test, and so you will, you will test indefinitely in the future, which is a good thing, it just prescribes.
Which we wanted to.
Do we need a motion? Because I mean, I was being serious.
Again, I won't point at Mr. Miller's approval this one, too. Do we have, I'll entertain a motion. Ms. Fogarty's got the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, by Ms. Usland, any further discussion? If not for the motion, please raise your hand, any opposed? Thank you. Any other ones, Dr. Carter?
No, sir.
Club sports and the spray. Those would be, these have been approved by Coach Olive, the athletic director, and they would involve golf, softball, soccer, baseball, bowling, swimming, tennis, and the bass club, and I believe all of those would be middle school, except swimming and the bass club, is that correct, Dr. Lawson? And those would, the swimming and the bass club would include the high school also. Is there a motion to approve Coach Olive's recommendation? Ms. Lawson has a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, by Ms. Johnson, any further discussion? If not for the motion, please respond by raising your hand. Any opposed? Thank you. Consent agenda, is there anything in the consent that needs to be removed before we have a motion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Summit.
Ms. Robinson, and I'm gonna let, Ms. Johnson has a second. I'm done there, equal opportunity. We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? If not for the motion, please respond, raise your hand, any opposed? Surety bond, Dr. Lawson.
No, sir, that was on the consent agenda.
Excuse me. Thank you. We're at your board.
We are, and Ms. Keane, thank you for joining us this evening, please share with us what you have from the city of Tullahoma.
Well, thanks for going pretty smoothly. As you can see, by going down Jackson Street, there is a lot going on. Please be mindful as you are in front of Publix, there's a lot of big trucks, as they're starting to stock the store, it's going to be open next week. So, please, please be mindful. We do have the light up, and it is at caution right now, but there has been a lot backed up, and there are things going on, so please, please be careful.
It was green today. It was actually working.
Is it working today? Okay. So please be careful with that, so that's pretty much it.
What's, are they putting in right there, ready turn to go to D.W. Wilson office?
Yes, storage units.
A storage unit.
I was not grading today, and I wondered what that was.
It's not a chicken restaurant. What is, what is being done down there in Clement Drive, at the intersection, across the General though?
It's the.
That's a litigation, I can't live on that.
Okay, well, something's going on. Movement.
I'm gonna scroll right now.
Have you?
You didn't say it, you didn't say it. She's got the key to it. It's for security purposes.
Diane.
Go ahead. The reason we can't scroll that edge, is that's it.
That's exactly right. It has truly been a blessing and my great honor to sit in this chair and represent this district for the last 22 years. You have made this arguably the best job in the Southeast, and I have enjoyed, oh, stop. And truly, you have provided for me a wonderful set of opportunities, and more importantly, a great set of friends. Thank you for allowing me to serve. This is it for me. So, peace out.
Ms. Vaughn, we have two other, we have a dinner and a reception to go, but I would like the minutes to reflect that the board wishes to extend our heartfelt thanks for the contributions Dr. Lawson's provided for our school system for the past 22 years.
Now, I would be brokenhearted if it reflects rather than sprinkles.
I want sprinkles.
That's much better.
Liberally. Anything else to come forward? Not entertain a motion to adjourn, is there's one?
Summit.
Ms. Fogarty, and I'm gonna sign it, a second to you, Ms. Usland, and I'm looking over here. Anything else? If you're for the motion, please raise your hand. We are adjourned, thank you all.